Hayward King.
Councilman Holcomb, you ready?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Councilman Mays, you ready to rock? We're gonna go ahead and go through Ways and Means, five seventeen, eighteen, so we're gonna go ahead and get started.
So he's got three, three possible.
Okay.
We got four, actually, this new one, Councilman Holcomb.
Uh, what's the?
This one was on the desk, uh, when we came in, amending the, uh, for the litigation settlement.
I got three.
Unless it's a... Yeah, well, we got the three that's on the agenda, and then we got this one here that was on the desk. Yeah, the, uh, number three, number four, number five, and then, um, then this one here, that one we, that one we have to add. Yeah, we have to add this one.
You got four to add?
Oh, no, 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 three to add.
Yeah.
No, I'm just talking about what we're gonna cut from Ways and Means.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Okay. All right.
I'll just make sure we're all.
Okay. See back there? Ah, he's right there.
That's been the best of the big old questions. So I think we have to, because everybody else is.
I missed a step.
We're old people, we can't afford it, we can't even afford a little bit.
Everybody else is.
I don't, I don't understand you. But maybe you could talk to them. That's it, okay, okay.
No, they recognize them. Oh, Jesus.
Is he in, is he in the booth?
Michael, we need the mic on my door. Please, again, get ready to start.
Thank you. Testing. All right, good evening, everyone. Um, we're going to call the Ways and Means Committee meeting to order. Today is August the fourth, twenty twenty-five, and it's approximately five twenty-two P.M. Tonight, we have, uh, four resolutions to consider that involve the transfer of funds. Uh, the first one is a resolution amending the twenty twenty-five municipal budget to close the A.R.P. fund account and transfer its funds to the general fund.
I'm hoping to send this to the full council.
All right, we have a motion in a second to send this resolution to the full council with a due pass. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Um, the next resolution we have is a resolution amending the twenty twenty-five municipal budget to transfer funds with the community, community development fund. That's agenda item number four. It's, it's in the pack. Follow step to the other one. There you go. Can we give a motion on this one?
I move to send this to the full council with a due pass.
Second.
All right, we'll send this to the full council with a due pass. Um, and let me go back for a second. So agenda item number three, um, those funds totaled one hundred and thirty-two thousand, eight hundred and eighty-one dollars and sixty-three cents. Um, and that goes to the, um, that is being transferred to the general fund. On agenda item number four, um, that total is eight hundred and sixty-nine thousand, nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars. Um, and that is coming from grant revenue and being sent to the community development fund. All right, let's see. The next resolution is, uh, it's actually agenda item number five. It's a resolution amending the twenty twenty-five municipal budget to transfer funds with the general fund for the Parks and Recreation Department. If we pull that one up. The total budget adjustment is twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars. This is coming from within Parks budget, um, from event supplies, fertilizer and chemicals, repair and maintenance building, and another fertilizer and chemical line item, and it is going to various expenses within the parks. Um, special events, technology, operating, repair and maintenance machinery, technology, telephone, technology, telephone, advertising, or gas, oil and lubricants, and repair and maintenance machinery.
I move to send this to the full council with a due pass.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to send this resolution to the full council with a due pass. All right, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it, motion is approved. Um, the last one that we have for a, um, for this committee is a resolution amending the twenty twenty-five municipal budget to transfer funds within the general fund for the settlement of litigation and to match a, and to match a grant. Uh, flip over there, total is fifty-five thousand dollars. Um, and this is going to, uh, coming from, should be coming from personnel general and also grant match.
I move to send to the full council with a due pass.
Have a motion in a second to send this resolution to the full council with a due pass. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it, motion is approved. Um, I believe he's probably gonna make this agenda item number, I'm not sure yet.
It'll be six.
It'll be six? So if it's added to the agenda, it will be agenda item number six. Um, do we have any other business for Ways and Means this evening?
Uh, no, sir, Mr. Chair.
All right, hearing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, Ways and Means is adjourned.
Ordinance and resolutions, we have five agenda items. Order, agenda item number one will be completed on tonight. Two, three, four, and five are all resolutions that will be completed on tonight. All of you should have in front of you three agenda items in front of you that have to be voted on to be added to the agenda. The first one is an ordinance revising travel policies for city officials, officers, and employees and for related purposes. This has been to the administration committee with a due pass. If added to the agenda, this would be agenda item one A. One A. The next one is a resolution amending the twenty twenty-five municipal budget to transfer funds within the general fund for the settlement of litigation and to match a grant. If added to the agenda, this would be agenda item number six. The last one is a resolution waiving competitive bidding and authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with... How do you say that?
Year eight.
Year eight. If added to the agenda, this will be agenda item number seven. Are there any questions for ordinance and resolutions?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Yes, and this, all of you should have this in front of you. This is amendment to agenda item number two. Okay, any, any further discussion?
No, sir, Mr. Chair.
Uh, motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
So moved.
Good evening, everyone, and while we wait for everyone to be seated, I want to welcome you to the Pine Bluff City Council Meeting, August fourth. And we do have on the list, um, speakers for an item that has actually not been voted to be ad, added to the agenda. So what we're gonna do is go through the agenda, and once it has been added, we will break to hear from those, um, to speak, and, um, you... Is it clear, too? Uh-oh, I don't wanna do that, but we can limit it to two minutes. How, how long is it normal? Okay. Um, so first, uh, since we don't have any public comments for agenda items, uh, given what I just shared, uh, we'll call the meeting to order and ask that, uh, my chief of staff, Reverend Joyce Campbell, deliver the invocation at this time. Please stand.
Let us pray. Creator of all people, as we gather here today in service to the people of Pine Bluff, guide us all by your principles of fairness, respect, and integrity. Let this meeting be a space for thoughtful dialogue, honest deliberation, and decisions that reflect the needs and hopes of our community. Oh, God, help every one of us to listen with open minds and speak with purpose. Help us approach our work with shared commitment to progress, inclusion, and the common good. As we consider the challenges and opportunities before us, help us all to remain focused on solutions that uplift every resident and strengthen our city with clarity of vision and unity of purpose. Let us move forward in your spirit of unity together. In the name of the almighty Creator, we pray, amen.
Amen.
And now, hell, and now, we will be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by the cadets from Watson Chapel Junior, or J.R.R.O.T.C., Junior R.O.T.C. And if you all would, before, um, you ask us to place our hand over our hearts, go ahead and introduce yourselves.
Good evening, I am Cadet Taya Kirchfield from Watson Chapel, J.R.O.T.C.
And I'm Cadet Hayward King. On account of three, we recite the, uh, pledge of allegiance. One, two, three. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Mays?
Here.
Councilmember Holcomb?
Here.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Lockett?
Here.
Councilmember Frazier?
Here.
Councilmember Brunson? Councilmember Denton?
Here.
Councilmember Fields?
Here.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. At this time, um, members of, uh, City Council, you should have the minutes from the July twenty-first meeting in your packets, and I will, um, recognize a, uh, motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from the July twenty-first meeting. Any discussion? With no discussion, all those who vote yes for approval indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And now, we will hear our committee reports. Councilmember Brown, will you please deliver the report for Ways and Means?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, Ways and Means has met twice since the last, um, City Council meeting. The first meeting was on July the twenty-ninth, where we had a mid-year budget review. Uh, we heard from our finance director, uh, we found out what our revenues versus expenses were for this time of the year. Uh, and the city is in, um, great shape, and we're, and our budget is on track. Um, the meeting we had today, just before this council meeting, we discussed agenda items number three, four, five, and a possible, uh, addition of number six, and all of those came out of Ways and Means Committee with a due pass. And that concludes my report, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. Councilmember Holcomb, will you please deliver the report on the ordinances and resolutions, committee?
Yes, Mayor. We have five agenda items. Number one is up for third and final re, reading. Number two, three, four, and five are all resolutions. They are up, will all be completed on tonight. All of you should have three additional agenda items that will have to be voted on tonight to be added to the agenda. The first one is agenda item number one A, which is an ordinance. It reads, an ordinance revising travel policies for city officials, officers, and employees and for related purposes. I move that this ordinance be added to the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that resolution...
One A.
One A?
Yeah.
Be adopted or added to the agenda? Any discussion? All of those who vote for resolution one A be added to the agenda indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Uh, we have to.
Please respond to Madam Clerk as she calls the roll.
Councilmember Mays?
Aye.
Councilmember Holcomb?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Lockett?
Aye.
Councilmember Frazier?
Aye.
Councilmember Brunson? Councilmember Denton?
Aye.
Councilmember Fields?
Aye.
The next agenda item is a resolution amending the twenty twenty-five municipal budget to transfer funds within the general fund for the settlement of litigation and to match a grant. I move that this resolution be added to the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. It's been moved and seconded that resolution number six be added to the agenda. Any discussion? With no discussion, please vote aye as Madam Clerk calls the roll.
Councilmember Mays?
Aye.
Councilmember Holcomb?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Lockett?
Aye.
Councilmember Frazier?
Aye.
Councilmember Brunson? Councilmember Denton?
Aye.
Councilmember Fields?
Aye.
The next resolution is added to the agenda, this would be agenda item number seven, a resolution waiving competitive bidding and authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with year eight. I move that this resolution be added to the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that resolution number seven be added to the agenda. Any discussion? With no discussion, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Mays?
Aye.
Councilmember Holcomb?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Lockett?
Aye.
Councilmember Frazier?
Aye.
Councilmember Brunson? Councilmember Denton?
Aye.
Councilmember Fields?
Aye.
Mayor, that concludes ordinance and resolutions, if there's no further discussion.
Thank you, Councilmember Holcomb. Councilmember Frazier, will you please deliver the report on economic and community development?
No report, Mayor. I would, uh, like to invite the community to support economic and community development in their Trolley Hop Thursdays to support our downtown area, and in support of that, we will be having a family-friendly movie in the library on the twenty-eighth at six P.M., so it's free to the public. Anybody that would like to attend, you must RSVP for it. Other than that, that's it, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Frazier. Councilmember Denton, will you please deliver the report for the Public Health and Welfare Committee?
Okay, uh, Public Health and Welfare will meet August the seventh at four P.M. in the old, um, council chambers.
Okay, that concludes your report, thank you. And Councilmember Lockett, will you please deliver the report for Public Works?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. The Public Works Committee met on July thirty-first at one o'clock in the old City Council Chambers. Um, Public Works, uh, staff reported that the following projects, uh, were, uh, updated. The Main Street Project Phase Two is ninety percent complete. The University Drive Streetscape Project is sixty-five percent com, complete. The M.L.K. Football Soccer Field Project is ninety percent complete. The D.R.B. Wellness Park Project is ninety-five percent complete. The Grant Street Multitrail Project, uh, this construction has just begun on that project. The U.A.P.B. Sewerage Project is eighty-five percent complete. The Home C.B.G. Homeless Project, uh, which the city purchased sixteen units of, um, homeless and affordable housing, uh, space. We have six, we have four vacancies, uh, in that particular, uh, project. The Harbor Oaks Irrigation Pump is ninety percent complete. Uh, the Park and Rec staff reported that the new Deputy Director, Brian Geiger, is restructuring the maintenance worker's schedule to better accommodate the work that's being done in our Park and Recreation Department. Uh, we have our new Athletic Director, Mr. Shabazz, is working on the athletic fields. Uh, the staff is busy installing cameras at the maintenance shop. There is upgrades at hole number nine on the J.C.'s golf course, and they recently completed the Bloom Tennis, uh, camp where thirty kids were served over a two-week period. Uh, and we also entertained item number seven, the year-eight proposed utilization of Chester Heinz recreational center. It was moved on to the council with a due pass. The street, the street department reported the paving of, uh, streets in the Third Ward, Fourteenth and Fifteenth Streets between Blake and Hemlock. Uh, I saw those streets, they're beautiful, it's, it's a good, uh, thing that we have, that seeing new streets completed. Uh, Ms. Kennedy from Clean and Beautiful, she reported that she met with the Edgewood Neighborhood Watch. Uh, she planned to also bring them into the great collaboration that she and, uh, Councilmember Fields are working on, this pilot project for city cleanups that will take place in September. And Mr. Joshua reported that things were on track at the Aquatic Center. Madam Mayor, that completes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Lockett. Councilmember Fields, will you please deliver the report for the Development and Planning Committee?
So Development and Planning, we met on July the eighteenth, and we sent agenda item number two to the council with a due pass recommendation. Uh, we should be meeting again in the coming weeks, and we'll send out an announcement with that date and time, and that concludes my report.
Thank you so much. Um, just a second. As Councilmember Brunson is, uh, not here today, we will skip over that particular committee, uh, report and ask that, uh, Councilmember Holcomb deliver the Administration Committee report.
Uh, yes, Mayor. The Administration Committee met last Wednesday, July the thirtieth. We met on agenda item number one A with a due pass. We also met on ordinance, uh... Ordinance amending Chapter nineteen, Article five. That ordinance was put on hold until the next council meeting, and that concludes my report, Mayor.
Thank you so much. And finally, Councilmember Brown, will you please, uh, deliver the report on the Public Safety Committee?
Yes, Mayor. The Public Safety Committee has not met since our last council meeting, um, but all council members should have a monthly report, um, from the, uh, Fire Department, and so if you have any questions about that, uh, you can get with, uh, Chief Compton, myself, or attend the next committee meeting. Um, typically, my meeting would be, um, Wednesday of this week, but we're gonna push that back, and I'll get with the clerk on a, uh, on another time. And that concludes my report.
Thank you so much. And now, we'll go back up to, um, engaging the, um, those who signed up to speak for what is now agenda, uh, item number seven, it's resolution number seven. And I will go in order as they appear on our public comments list and ask that, uh, Marika Bender come to the front. Come to the front. And since there are so many citizens here tonight to speak in favor of resolution number seven, we ask that you, um, limit your comments to a minute.
To how much?
A minute.
One minute, okay, well, my name is Marika Bender, I'm a faculty member of University Arkansas Pine Bluff, and I am very much support of the year eight program at Chester Heinz. I think that we need to have some programs and a place for our youth that'll help our community, and eventually, of course, we'll do more than just the youth, and I'm just here as a big supporter of them, I hope they get it, that's my minute.
Next is Tiki Hunt.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Tiki Hunt. I'm the Director of 4H Youth Development at the University of Arkansas at Pine Bluff. And YA Eight Incorporated was one of the first, was the first program that UAPB 4H collaborated with when we started on campus. Both my children went through YA Eight, and I've worked with various children through there. And it is an amazing program. They did have a program at Chester Heinz at one time. And we, I am in full support of YA Eight having that sole source use of Chester Heinz. And this is not without precedent. We know that at the Big Rec, TOPS has sole source use of that city facility that's under Parks and Rec as well. And I am 100% for this.
Thank you so much. I hope I say this right. Janique Henderson? Is that right? Okay, well, you can correct me.
Good evening. My name is Janie Henderson. I am a sophomore attending the University of Arkansas at Pine Bluff. I want to say thank you for listening. And I'm here today to speak in support of the program of YA Eight. YA Eight is more than just a program. It's a movement. It's a program built around the idea, when you give young people opportunity, mentorship, and the voice, they thrive. YA Eight provides daily enrichment activities tailored to the age groups we service, and much more. And doing so is such helping youth channel their energy into growth, leadership, and service. This summer, I worked at the Verizon Innovative Learning Program, which is a part of the same team at YA Eight. It was a great experience. Not only was I a part of a wonderful team, but I also had the opportunity to learn and grow through a variety of challenges and opportunities. I witnessed firsthand the important work with an amazing team. If Verizon could change lives, I know YA Eight can preach even further. That's why I'm asking the council today to recognize and value YA Eight and support it, whether it's through funding, partnership, or simply spreading the word. Investing in programs like this is investing in a stronger, safer, more vibrant future for everyone. Thank you for listening.
Thank you so much, Jenny. Jalise Allen?
Good evening. My name is Jalise Allen, and I've been a part of YA Eight since I was in the second grade, and now I'm a senior at Washington Chapel High School. YA Eight has been a big part of my life because they helped me with my reading and my math. I struggled with that for a long time. And when I got there, they helped me, and they encouraged me that whatever I can do, I can put, and put my mind to it, I can do it. And they support your dreams and everything, and I really want it back, so thank you.
Thank you. Leila McLean? And Taylor Calhoun is after Leila, so you can start making your way.
Hello. My name is Leila McLean. I'm a student at the University of Arkansas at Pine Bluff. And YA Eight has always been a big part of my life. We started off as just a small robotics club. And from then on, you could really just tell that there was a really warm environment for the students to really thrive and succeed and just be themselves and not really have to worry about just finding other things to do in Pine Bluff. I really think they should bring it back, and I really feel like the students of this generation just need more things to do and to be more productive. So, thank you.
Thank you so much, Leila. Taylor Calhoun?
Good evening, Mayor Flowers, esteemed members of the City Council and the, and the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas. My name is Taylor Calhoun. I am a senior at Pine Bluff High School, and I am the captain of the YA eight Robotics Team. And I want to tell you a little story. If you told me that six years ago I'd be standing up here in front of the City Council talking about robotics, I would have called you crazy. I would have told you that I have stage fright and that I'm incredibly shy and that you could count all my friends on one hand. But that's exactly what YA Eight and Ms. Laura have done for me and changed about my life. And many of my teammates. You see, robotics isn't just about building and coding a robot from scratch. It's about community. It's about friendship. It's about love. Love for learning, love for challenges, and love for each other. Because of robotics, I've met so many people that I never thought I would have ever met before, and it changed my life. I hope that y'all do support YA Eight Robotics.
Thank you so much. Landon Stewart?
Good afternoon.
Wait, hold on. Actually, yeah, you could. There we go. And then you can come around so we can see you, because. There you go. Yes. Okay.
Good afternoon. I am Landon Stewart, and I am seven and a half years old. I've been practicing, participating in Mindful Mondays since I was three years old. Do you know what the largest volcano in our solar system is? I do. It's Olympus Mots. You can, and you can find it on Mars. Mindful Mondays are important to me because it is fun. I get to see friends, do fun experiments, and activities outside. I really enjoy growing our own pumpkin patch, using Vitrol reality headsets, and exploring outer space. My favorite thing is the robots. Please support our program so that we can continue to do more of fun STEM learning.
Thank you very much, Landon. And finally, Tyler Johnson. And I know that Mr. Johnson, you presented to Parks and Rec several months ago. And since you are leading this effort and presentation, we'll indulge you with two minutes.
Sounds good. Before I get started, first, on behalf of our entire team and our students, I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to bring this great cause to light. We started back in 2011, and we haven't operated officially with the full-length summer program since 2018. And we are so excited to do the work, to engage with the community, and to, most importantly, enrich our youth. They're the future. And if we're not pouring back into them, who will? And so that's just a question that I want to pose to everyone in this room. And, you know, with potential municipal support from the council at large and the community that's here behind us, we, the pathways are endless to student success, as we saw with Landon, our youngest, and we have students that have now returned to our program to support us in employment capacities, where there's this revolving door of support and ongoing development, from Landon's age all the way up, throughout college, up into their careers, and beyond as well. And so that's the type of impact that we want to make with YA Eight. Youth, education, arts, and health. We're gearing up for a lot of great programming, not only in the form of after-school enrichment, where we're pouring in from the educational perspective, but through STEM learning, building robots. We're actually getting ready to compete in October, so we have one of our workshops coming up this upcoming Saturday. So we have so many ideas, just, you know, that are backed by our community. We're here to do the work. As I've mentioned before, we're very much a results-driven organization and movement. And, you know, back in 2012, when we had our first, I call it our big summer program over at Chester Heinz, we had over 100 students. And it was the first time, my mother, Lori Hildreth, who, you know, stepped out on faith, put together a grassroots initiative, a brand-new team, a brand-new initiative, a brand-new framework to support YA Eight. It was a massive success. We've had so many people reach out to us with hopes of returning the programming, and we took it upon ourselves to reenact that. And so I just hope that's the message that's taken away from this session and hearing from our students. And ultimately, if we have your support, just the, the results are just endless. And so we, again, thank you for your time. And if there are no more questions, I'm, I'm happy to answer or provide any further clarification, so.
Any questions? Councilmember Fails?
I did just have one question. I do appreciate you for bringing this board, and I need complete support of the partnership. I do see on the second and last page of the MOU, it's saying that the MOU should be in effect for two years. But in the resolution, it's saying it will be in effect, the program and partnership will be in effect for 12 months. So I'm wondering, do we need to amend the resolution, or are we going to come back in a year and go on?
Yes, I think, unless, yeah. Just to be consistent, are you making that motion?
So, yeah, do we need to wait until the discussion?
Okay. Councilmember Mays?
Yes, I'd like to say, good job, Lori. Keep doing what you're doing. You all can change the game. A lot of our organizations have really gotten slack. I'll support anything y'all do from the council. Just, just make it happen. Some people are just getting lazy. Lori has always done it. Keep leading like you're doing. You got my support from the council. Go ahead of the rest of them. Please. God bless you.
Councilmember Frazier?
I'm excited, and then I'm a little disappointed because I know Laura. And she, she was very welcoming to me when I first got here. And I remember coming to Chester Heinz and visiting her. And I'm just disappointed that I didn't know anything about your organization. You didn't, didn't share it with me. So, but, but just to say, I'm looking forward to seeing what you will do with this program. I do have a question. Why did it stop? Can anybody answer that? What, what happened that made it stop? I mean, although I didn't know about it, evidently it's been effective because the youth are speaking about it.
I think, if I can answer. I think it's a combination of multiple factors. Of course, financial, as well as, I think, if I were to put it one A and one B, the one B would be having a space to run an effective program. Our final year in 2018 was with partnership and collaboration with TOPS at their facility. But following that summer, we decided that we'll scale back and, you know, we'll do some internal planning. Ms. Hildreth then engaged with the National Association for College Community Entrepreneurship, NACY for short, in launching up the Verizon Innovative Learning Program, where YA Eight has sponsored that program and been in partnership with that program.
At UAPB?
At UAPB, that's correct. And so the end goal was to bring back the original YA Eight that we all know and love, and that several supporters from the community, parents, students, past participants, and just supporters at large, just wanted us to reignite. And so we've spent a few years putting, putting the team together, professionals like now myself. I was once a participant in the program. Since I've graduated from UAPB, I'm finishing my masters with UAPB, and now I'm a senior analyst, consultant, and project manager for Aeon Global Business. But in my spare time, I just thought that, you know, this is something that's meaningful, that's actually making a difference in the community in which we live, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further, any further questions? Okay, with that, I will accept the motion? You know what? I'm so sorry. I'm so confused because we brought back the public comments and put it in a different section. I was wondering what you were telling me. My, my apologies. Okay, so we, then that concludes our public comments. That normally takes place at the top of the meeting. Thank you so much. And now. Yes. Thank you. I know you were trying to tell me that. Okay, so we will begin with the proposed ordinances and resolutions. Councilmember Holcomb?
Thank you, Mayor. Agenda item number one, an ordinance amending Section 2-141 of the Code of Ordinance of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, to authorize municipal government to make electronic payments and related purposes up for the third and final reading.
I'm sorry, Councilmember, if I could stall you just one second, because Councilmember Brown suggested that before we enter into the business of the proposed ordinances and resolutions, he's requested that we hear from Chief Warrior and recognize the cadets who are here with us this evening, as well as Saracen and Carlton Saffa is here as well. And I've put those economic impact analyses books in front of you. So let's go ahead and do that, and then we'll move forward if you, unless there's any objection by the council. Okay, council, I mean, Chief Warrior?
Good afternoon, Mayor Flowers, councilmembers, our citizens of our community. On behalf of Chief Warrior, Assistant Chief Hatley, and this is our team at Internal Affairs, Office of Professional Standards, and I would like to say, on my behalf, I would like to lean the floor to Lieutenant Bennett. And he's basically been recruiting for us. He's been boots on the ground. He, if they, he meets them wherever he needs to meet them. If it's at 6:00, 7:00, 8:00, Saturday or Sunday, he meets them on their grounds. He calls them, follows up on them, and they can testify to that, follow up with them, and encourage them. So I would like to, after Chief Hatley, I'd like Lieutenant Bennett to have the floor. He introduced the cadets.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Listen, this is a great day, I say, for Pine Bluff, Arkansas, for the Pine Bluff Police Department. As you will see, I'm not going to step on Lieutenant Bennett's toes, but you will be introduced to some of our new recruits that Lieutenant Bennett and Captain Atkinson has actively went out and recruited to hire. Not only do we have 16 new recruits, we also have two certified officers that are here. So it's going to be a total of 18. So this is a great day for the city of Pine Bluff. We ask that you all continue to be patient with us, because these ladies and gentlemen, I do believe in my heart, after they had went through the vetting process of all of us, that they're going to make you all proud, they're going to make the city proud, and they're going to provide the best service possible for the city of Pine Bluff. I'm turning it over to Lieutenant Bennett.
How y'all doing today?
Doing well.
I'm Deshaun Bennett. I'm the lieutenant over Internal Affairs, under the leadership of Captain Sam Atkinson. Today, we have before you 16 brand-new recruits. When I call your name, please stand up. Officer Burshett. Officer Horner. Officer Cole. Officer Iverson. Officer St. Julian. Officer Thor. Officer Rogers. Officer Shelby. Officer Blake. Officer Murphy. Officer Swopes. Officer Wagner. Officer Plummer. Officer Baz. Officer Lewis. Officer Giles, Jr. Now, these 16 will be going to the Arkansas Law Enforcement Training Academy in August, actually, on August 24th. They have to stay there for 13 weeks, so they'll graduate November 21st. We also have two certified officers that we brought aboard, Officer Mitchell. Officer Durham. These two officers here, they don't have to go to the training academy. They've already been, so they can immediately get, put in the ranks and go to work after their 12 weeks of training. We also hired four part-time officers. We only have one that's here today, Officer Tyson. Officer Tyson is full-time certified. Officer Tyson is full-time certified as well. She works another job at the ADC, we've been trying to get her, but maybe we'll win her over a little bit later. She's already certified, so she'll be riding with a certified FTO until she is able to figure out where she's going. Officer Elliott, Officer Chisholm, and Officer O'Neil couldn't make it tonight, but we have a total of 22 officers that we hired since April. We just ask that you pray for these individuals. They have a long journey ahead, and they could be anywhere, but they chose Pine Bluff, Arkansas. And now I'm going to turn it over to Captain Ackerson.
I came in OPS in 2019. Bennett just recently, Lieutenant Bennett just recently came over about a couple of years after. And our office works Monday through Friday, eight to five. And when I took over, I told them that a lot of these people back here behind us couldn't make it between the hours of eight to five, that you adjust your schedule. We started testing folks on the weekend, we're doing polygraphs after hours, because we try to accommodate for their schedule. Back in the day, it was come through eight to five, and you're gone. So we changed the game up on that. Thank you.
Any comments or questions from the council?
I just want to say, this is one of the most impressive recruiting classes I've ever seen. Thank you all for all the work that you're doing. Continue to do whatever it is that you're doing to continue to recruit for the police department, and just thank you. Thank you. Keep up the good work.
My thing is, you know...
Councilmember Mays?
We're already a great city. Help us make it go up in the top 10. It won't take a whole lot. We're already up there, you know, in the state of Arkansas. Pine Bluff is on the map. We just got to get better as a group of people. It's all to Amaze. Come on, let's get better. And you see people walking around the street? Y'all can deal with that. You know, I see them all the time. They have to do a lot better, but that's why you all are here. Help us go to the next level.
All to Amaze, we got this. We're going to be, we're going to do our job.
Let me finish.
But no, I'm just saying.
No, Chief, let me finish. Go ahead, hey, y'all, go ahead and do what you can do to help us to be a great, greater city in the state of Arkansas.
Thank you so much. The only thing I'm saying is, we got the new ones, we're going to train them the right way.
With the last footnote, I want to say this. Although you may see these 16 that's going down to the academy, we have not stopped on our hiring process. We have another five to seven that's going through the process right now as we speak. So our goal is to at least try to add another 10 in before the end of the year. I wanted to end with that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Lockett?
I just got one question. What is our count now for full-time, uniformed policemen?
I meant, I have to let Captain Ackerson answer that one.
I believe we had 87, 88. I believe it was 87, though. Working on a possible 96. 96, yeah. Yeah, another eight. So we're going to another eight to be at 96.
And total personnel, including part-timers, what is that number?
I believe we have a total of 14 part-timers. So that'll be 86, 87 full-time and 14 part-times.
Great job.
I would just like to make a quick comment. First of all, you all look so good. Y'all making me feel real safe. The point I would like to make about tonight is that leadership matters and unity matters. No one person is responsible for the mammoth presentation of progress that you have seen tonight, whether the YAID inclusion into the programming and opportunities that young people will have through our Parks program and from this partnership, or this beautiful display of cadets that represents a major shift that many people said, inside city government and outside of city government, said that wasn't possible, that no one wanted to come to Pine Bluff for a myriad of reasons, whether it was money or misconceptions about who we are and what we are. And so I just want to thank the leadership within the police department, the leadership at Parks. I see Director Holman is here tonight. Tonight is a good night, and I feel really good about the trajectory of this city and the progress, and it is through the unity of this council and the mayor's office and every member of the personnel of the City of Pine Bluff that is making this progress happen, and we're looking forward to more. So I'm just ecstatic, and thank you all. Then, okay, so Carlton Saffa. I know you want us to stay here all night and hear all the wonderful things that we're doing and hear our processes, and we may see you, but we thought we'd give you an opportunity to say a little bit about this economic impact analysis that he so happily dropped off a couple of dozen copies of, and we wanted to share it with the council and afford you an opportunity to speak a little bit to that analysis and what that means for our economy and for our city.
Certainly. Thank you very much. And by the way, we've known each other for a long time. I love this stuff. I'd love to sit and listen to amendments and, you know, Councilmember Fells catching a Scrivener's error. I'm like, ah, flashback to my days when I first met you, Mayor, but for those of you all who I don't know, which I think I know just about everybody here, my name is Carlton Saffa. I was the first employee at Saracen, and for some reason, they've still kept me around, and I'm honored every day because of it. I will tell you, that is a tough act to follow. What an impressive group of people, and what an incredible surprise tonight. I had no idea. What you all can't see up there that I can see down here is just how shiny all their shoes are. So I'm sitting back here looking at my feet and thinking, I got to go home and polish my shoes. I don't know how y'all do that. You got to see it. You can see yourself in them. Y'all are great. So I shared something with you all that we were pretty proud of. We hired a company called Boyet, and Boyet is an economic development consulting firm. I'm just going to hold this, it's easier. Boyet's an economic development consulting firm, kind of recognized to be the best in the region. I called the ADC, I called the State Chamber, called Little Rock Chamber. I said, who should we hire? I don't want somebody who's going to put their finger on the scale. I really want to know what kind of impact we've had, because if I'm going to stand up and say, the casino did this, I want it to be real. You don't want my numbers. We want real numbers. And I'm honored to tell you, this report is the result of that. There's a copy of it in front of you, and Mayor Flowers, I will share a copy electronically. I believe I've sent it to Chief Campbell, but that is your report to do what you choose to do with. But I believe it is indicative of what this city, what the city of progress can do and what is capable of. In an effort to be concise, I actually wrote down what I was going to say, because otherwise we'll be here a while. So if that's all right with you, I'll just read from my notes to save you some time and make sure I get everything in. I wanted to begin by saying that I am most honored to be here, because I believe I represent the 800-plus folks I have the privilege of working with. And Saracen's payroll today is over 800 and will soon be over 1,000 with the addition of the Hotel and the Event Center. Of those 800, over 600 live in Jefferson County, with the vast majority living in this city. I'm even more honored, though, to be here on behalf of the Kwapaw Nation, who lived here long before anyone called this place what we call it, Pine Bluff, or even Arkansas itself, a word from the Kwapaw language. The Kwapaw Nation believes in us. They believe in Pine Bluff, they believe in what we're doing, and they put their money where their mouth is. Now, the Kwapaw are small, about 4,000 people, and people forget that they borrowed the money to invest in that project. But we're at over half a billion dollars in the ground in Pine Bluff, and when complete, it will be over 650 million. Big numbers become abstract very easily, so let me give you a fact. That is the single largest one-time investment in hospitality and tourism in the history of the state of Arkansas, and it is in Pine Bluff. And Saracen's doing very well. You don't have to read that report to know it. You can drive by. I actually sent the mayor a picture. If you happen by the casino, there was a Saracen on one side of the building for some time, and as of about an hour and a half ago, there was a 32-foot S added, and the other side says Saracen as well. You'll be able to see it coming down 5:30 from a mile away. So both sides now say Saracen, and we're honing in on being done. But Saracen's doing very well. As a mark, we're the leader in central Arkansas in gaming, leading the region not just in total gaming revenue, but slots and tables. We are the market leader in on-premises gaming as well, with over 1 million visitors per year coming through our doors. Pine Bluff is the leader in the Little Rock market, eclipsing a competitor in this space for over 100 years, and we've done it in just five. I say that not to boast, and I'm sorry to cut you off, I love the applause, but I say that not to boast, but we're just getting started. And of course, our sportsbook continues to exceed all expectations. Y'all, Pine Bluff is home to America's 13th-largest sportsbook. Pine Bluff's also home to Arkansas's best restaurant, Red Oak, named so five years in running, and most recently, according to Wine Spectator, the country's most trusted source on wine rankings, we're home to a 10,000-bottle wine cellar with the highest ranking and award of excellence, something that you won't find in any other casino in the region in the South. You know, as an aside, I am going to get off my notes for just a second. As an aside, if I told anyone in this room, someone said earlier that you'd have called them crazy, that was a good story about what that program meant for that young lady. But if I'd told you all 10 years ago that there was a restaurant in Pine Bluff that would be full of people who had driven in from out of town, and you'd have to have a reservation several days in advance, and it would be full of people from Little Rock and other places, you'd have said, you're crazy. The way I like to say it is, the best place to eat in Little Rock's in Pine Bluff, and the numbers prove it. And soon, Pine Bluff will be home to the state's newest and finest hotel, 326 rooms strong with half of them suites. Now, I've been in some finished rooms, and they will blow you away. Quartz and marble, terrazzo floors in the lobby, the chandelier weighs 15,000 pounds. I can't wait to show it off. I know you can't wait to show it off. And if you're like me, you've got some fancy family or friends from out of town, you can't wait to show it to them when they come back, because that's what we can do in the city of progress when we're given a chance. Now, the question you're asking is, when will it be done? And I've always laughed that I had no credibility with terms of project timeline, but it is almost done, and you can drive by and you can see it. The glass is in, and many of the floors are almost completely done. We will ultimately have over 1 million square feet under roof between all of our facilities. And with a project this big, there are a lot of moving parts, so things like tariffs, moving case goods from Chinese to Vietnamese finishing, and on, and on, and on. That 15,000-square-foot chandeliers in a warehouse waiting to be installed, because we can't control exactly when things come in and when they're ready. My best bet, and I say that no pun intended, is that we will have this thing done in a couple of blocks. I think we're going to have 100 to 150 rooms pretty quickly. I think you'll see them at the end of the year. Then I think you'll see the remainder of the contingent follow shortly thereafter. And by the way, we have a Starbucks coming into the lobby. They approached us. We didn't go to them. And my dear friend, Bill Jones, who built an iconic brand, following in the footsteps of his mother's sissy, he'll have a store in the lobby as well. It can't be Pine Bluff. It can't be done right if we don't keep Pine Bluff in the place. And we thought, letting somebody like Bill with his incredible brand, you know, that blue bag is the Tiffany's of the South, and it started here in Pine Bluff, so that'll be in the lobby as well. And I heard y'all like music, so we have a 1,700-seat event center with a permanent stage, and some of the acts are going to blow you away. We're not talking about bands where one member's alive, or it's somebody's son. There's sorts of bands that you'd think you'd have to drive to Dallas or Memphis to see, and we expect to do that regularly. So, all right, let me give you an answer. When's it going to be done? We'll have rooms this year, and we'll have the whole thing done in the first quarter of next year. That's at the latest. I'm going to under-promise and over-deliver, as we've tried to do with that hotel, and spent a long time sort of dancing about where we'd be and how we'd be, but drive by and see it. And you're looking at a $300-million property. No, we won't make homecoming, if that's what you're thinking. But that's just plenty of time to plan for next year. We've said fall '25 in all of our advertising, because that gives us a window. You know, these seasons are crazy. They actually call fall all the way into December, and we did that on purpose. So we will have availability, we believe, in that timeline. And like I said, it will be in pieces. I want to end with a couple of numbers, and then I'll be quiet, and I'm happy to take any questions, although y'all are probably sick of me already. To date, Saracen has paid about $1 million in advertising and promotion taxes. I think that's important, because we're doing well, but we're helping provide resources to spread the message about this community and other places. It's interesting, because Pine Bluff is the only city in the COVID and post-COVID era in Arkansas to see an increase. Most cities actually saw a double-digit decrease during COVID, but A&amp;P has been strong, and I believe we're the largest contributor to A&amp;P. If we're not, I'd like to meet him, because I'm not aware of him, but that's our obligation. Since inception, Saracen has paid from its gaming taxes alone over $23 million to the City of Pine Bluff. And on top of that, there's sales taxes, property taxes, and all sorts of other taxes. Again, I stand here not to ask for a thank you for taxes that we should already be paying, but it is a privilege to pay taxes when your business is doing well. It is a privilege to do business in the city of progress, just like it's a privilege to be before you here tonight. And I hope you enjoyed the economic impact report as much as I did. I want to end with two numbers. According to Boyet, the third-party expert we hired, each year Saracen means $236 million to the local economy. I had to read it twice. So that's our payroll, applying the standard turnover within our community. That's annually, $236 million every single year. But I saved the best one for last. It's our total impact since inception. So go back to 2019, October 2019. To date, Saracen has had an economic impact on Jefferson County of $2.1 billion. I'm humbled. I don't believe the numbers, although I know they're true, they're from the best experts there are. I'm going to say it again, $2.1 billion, and I don't know what to do but smile. I hope you feel the same, and I know that the best is yet to come. Mayor Flowers, we will not let you down.
Thank you so much. Any questions? Councilwoman Frazier?
I just want to know, when can we do a tour of the hotel?
You just let me know. Now, here's the thing, it's pretty hot outside, so you're going to need some steel-toed boots, long-sleeved shirt, a hard hat, and we'll make it happen.
We'll do it.
Happy to do it.
We just did it.
Happy, happy, happy to do it. Happy, happy, happy to do it. And before long, you won't need any of that. You'll just need a nice dress and a little money for the casino floor.
Councilmember Mays?
Mr. Safra?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for what you do. His word has been good ever since it came to town. Am I right?
That's all I've got, sir.
And they mean business. They take care of business. If you go out there, everything is in order. Keep doing what you're doing, man. You're doing a great job. You gave us your word when you first came to town.
Thank you. We've been through a lot. The economy's been through a lot. The Kwapaw Nation has been through a lot. But quit is not in us. And... I didn't intend to say this, but I'm going to. I think there are a lot of people who, for whatever reason, had not been to this community in a long time, who are coming here. And I think the next step is to get them to stay. And I don't mean in our hotel. I mean to stay. Somebody told me when I first came here, and I didn't understand it at first, that the road from Little Rock to Pine Bluff must be a whole lot longer than the road from Pine Bluff to Little Rock, because people don't seem to understand. I hope you understand what I mean. It's, we know how close it is to Little Rock. Little Rock doesn't always know how close it is here. And about 70% of our business comes from Little Rock. They've learned. In fact, people said, "Why don't y'all talk more about Pine Bluff in your ads?" We're proudly in Pine Bluff. But we did a poll, survey. People didn't realize this is crazy, especially to us here, that it's 45 minutes. And it's 46 miles on 530, which I contend is the best highway in this state. We had to advertise proximity to Little Rock, and anybody in real estate will tell you location, 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 right? So that's why we've always said 40 miles, 46 miles, whatever it is we say. But thank you, Councilmember Mays. I consider you a friend, and you will never hear anything but the truth from me, whether it's good, bad, or ugly. And we've been through some ugly, and Mayor Flowers knows about that. But we're here. I am prone to golf analogies, because I love to play golf. I was here all weekend playing golf. The Saracen property has been playing with seven clubs in the bag and shooting great scores. We're about to have 14, and it's gonna get real fun.
Thank you so much.
I have one more question, though.
I won't tell you who the first act is. It's a big secret. I hope that's not what you're asking.
If you would, if you would, I'm just saying, let's put Pine Bluff back into the advertising ads. Let's put Pine Bluff. Some people just getting away from, like, we're not a bad city. We're not bad people. We love people.
Hey, I know all that as well as anybody. Yeah. No, we've got a whole plan for that, whether hotel and the way it will be marketed. But the proximity to Little Rock was the critical thing. Because people thought Pine Bluff was like an hour and a half away. It's crazy.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And I'm sorry I took so long. And I hope you enjoy the book.
And now, we will proceed with the proposed ordinances and resolutions. Thank you, Councilmember Holcomb.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, Mayor. Agenda item number one, an ordinance amending Section 2-141 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, to authorize municipal government to make electronic payments and related purposes for the third and final reading.
An ordinance amending Section 2-141 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, to authorize municipal government to make electronic payments and related purposes.
Move for adoption?
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded, that ordinance, number one, be adopted. Any discussion?
Yes.
Councilmember Mays?
Yeah. Tell me something. How much will this electronic payment, which is not cash, which is not in your hand, it's electronic, hurt our city and our casino in the long run?
It will not hurt anything. This is about us paying our bills electronically.
I mean, do you feel like we need more time on this?
No, this is the third reading, Councilmember. Any further questions?
Madam Mayor?
Councilmember Lockett?
Yes, ma'am. I've been trying to digest this. The problem that I have with it is I can't support electronic payment policy without an actual design on how we're gonna actually do it. This is still a document that, we've had it on the agenda, but there's no work that's been done on it to say what the actual policy will be in terms of what the treasurer, the clerk, and the finance director will actually, what procedure they have. This document just in, it allows them to do it. But, you know, and this other addition that bring your own device, now that is quite confusing. And I just really can't support that. It just seems like anybody with a cellphone or iPad can make electronic payments.
You said bring your own device.
Yeah, it's on here. It says, it says, Arkansas Legislative Audit, Bring Your Own Device. I don't even understand what part of this goes with the electronic payments.
So let me share this. What I do know is that we have vetted this through the Arkansas Municipal League, that we currently now are automated in terms of making electronic payments through payroll. And we have also vetted this process through the clerk's office. The reason that we leave the language flexible and identify the entities that are involved with the finances and payment structure is because right now, as you well know, we're going through a pretty huge transition as it relates to our whole finance software system. And so, without really knowing exactly how things might change once that is on board, what we don't want to do is hamstring ourselves with language that says it must be done one way or the other. And then, once the transition is complete and Tyler Technologies is in place, some of what is done even now, as you know, we are still using paper checks. It drags out the process for paying our vendors. We've been dinged before for paying bills late, because we cannot pay electronically when many other cities do this. We are not trying to change the process that allows us to ensure accountability. We are not trying to change it so that, for example, the finance department pays the bill when we know that our clerk's office is in charge of accounts payable. As a matter of fact, with what we went through more recently with parks, and how some of the things slipped through the cracks, we're absolutely not trying to do that. But what we do need to do is catch the city of Pine Bluff up to the 21st century. There are cities with finance processes whereby there isn't a separation between receiving claims or warrants to pay, and then another agency actually makes the payment. In other cities, that happens within the same entity. We're not trying to do that. All we're trying to do, the only change that would take place is that where we have to wait on a paper check to be processed and mailed to get to our vendors, or intergy, or whomever, instead of Madam Clerk sending that paper check, we would actually be able to use the internet, go figure, and have whatever that looks like, whether it's a process that we use through our bank account, or whether, any other way, whether we go to the site. I don't know, whatever is most secure. But all we're trying to do is allow for us to move into the 21st century with the system we have right now, and get out of the archaic process of having to resort everything to paper, and people come to, drive all the way here from other cities to pick up their checks so they don't have to wait for it to go through the mail, or risk it being lost in the mail. Now, this is a matter of us being more efficient, more financially responsible as it relates to our fiduciary responsibility. And in no other city does it lay out the specifics of what you're talking about, when that can be done through the financial processes and procedures. As a matter of fact, I talked with the state auditor today as it relates to using Reliances Machine to make our deposits. And she told me that the only thing we want to do is make sure that we have things in place so that there's oversight, that things don't fall through the cracks, and whatever our process is, that we put that process in place with the documented rules of procedure that we put in place as it relates to this. We have it in place for others, which I didn't know before. We actually have documented rules and procedures in place for other financial procedures that we actually have to give to audit when they're conducting our audit. So when the treasurer, and the finance director, and Madam Clerk come together to determine exactly what changes, it could be as simple as, instead of a paper check, Madam Clerk will go into a system and send the payment electronically. I don't think any of us are expert enough to determine what that is or should be. And I don't think our system is such that we should resort that to an ordinance versus the processes that even the state auditor suggests that we put in place as it relates to another change. So I just would encourage you to allow us to move to the 21st century, allow us to be more efficient in paying our bills and paying our vendors. I believe there's someone here tonight with a complaint about two weeks passing, and it wasn't necessarily anyone's fault, it's the way things happened. But, you know, these vendors are small businesses that rely on getting paid after they do the work. And the wheels of government sometimes can move very slowly unless and until we put things in place to be more efficient. So I think, you know, as a matter of doing the people's business, but also being responsive and respectful to our small businesses and those vendors who do the hard work and have to wait on a paper check, I just, I think it would be irresponsible to wait any further, especially in light of the fact that we have moved this legislation through the appropriate process. It's gone through committee. It has gone through being on the agenda for the last three meetings, and no one has said a word. So I just, I think that, it's not hurting me or anybody up here. I think we need to think about our vendors, and think about how quickly we can get things done and get our folks paid who do the work in this city as vendors, and for paying our bills to make sure that we don't encounter yet another situation, which happened not too long ago, where we have to wait on some kind of documentation and pay our bill late and risk being cited by auditors. And with that, I'll answer any other questions you might have.
Madam Mayor?
Councilmember Fels?
So first of all, I do appreciate you and your team for trying to make municipal payments more efficient. As a former city employee, I am familiar, you know, with some of the frustrations that come along with that current system. And getting these paper checks, you know, how to people, it is 2025. I do believe we need to modernize as best we can. But I do share some of Mr. Lockett's concerns. Specifically, I do believe that, especially in light of some of the incidents that we've had, like in Parks and Recreation, I just think we have to be extremely cautious about the way city dollars are expended, who has the ability to do what. I know we have our procurement officers who's gonna be coming on board in January. I am curious in terms of how this policy would, how that procurement officer would affect this policy. But I am looking here, like on page 20, for example, and this is from the Arkansas Legislative Audit, and it has things like, it's telling us to establish a comprehensive bring-your-own-device policy. It also has another line where it says, "Develop comprehensive written policies." And so, I would have appreciated, I'm not saying we would have had to necessarily solidify it within our ordinances, but just a detailed breakdown of exactly what type of payments we're trying to make online, like you're saying about the bills and things like that, exactly which employees would be authorized to do so. Are they gonna be using like their personal phones for that, city tablets? What's the case gonna be? You know, other things like in terms like dual control, like who's gonna be requesting a transaction, who would be, you know, approving a transaction. And I know, you know, it was stated that this has been on the agenda for three readings, and no one has said anything. But I believe when this was originally proposed, it was within the first one to two months of the year. I know that that, there were requests made for a detailed policy. I've even reached out to the clerk's office, and you know, it was stated that, you know, that was under development. So I'm not necessarily opposed to this, but I do share the concern. I would like a little bit more details before I could feel comfortable with putting a stamp of approval on this.
So when you did ask for that, and when we finally got this filed and started moving it through the process, it was after we vetted this language through the Arkansas Municipal League. And also, Madam Clerk and I sat down and talked about this as well. And I also visited with our project manager, Vivian Wright. And so, the reason that this was not incorporated, it's not that you were waiting on this language once we got it filed. And when we filed this, and also when we went through the process in committee, I explained that those details would not be included in the actual ordinance, because it wouldn't be prudent. It would be inefficient. In the case where you're putting a comprehensive rules and regs in place for something like this, anything could change that. And then you have to go back and go through an ordinance amendment rather than making the changes that the experts deem appropriate. Obviously, you know, no one's gonna come in off the street and pay a bill on their phone. And the purpose for that language, I can't, I can't tell you why that's in there. If that's something that you feel extremely uncomfortable, and you think that somehow in Madam Clerk's office, or in the finance department, there would be some kind of issue based on that language, I would not be averse to striking that language and moving forward with the rest of it. But it wouldn't make sense. And no, other cities don't do it that way. The model is what we got from the Arkansas Municipal League. And I've explained, and I don't know how else to explain it, that we can't do it that way, particularly in light of the transition we're going through with Tyler Technologies. And what could happen over the next course of a couple of years, as we finalize the changes to our system, could mean we have to come back two or three times if we put that kind of comprehensive system. And I'll also point out, you know, you kind of reflected back on the issues with regard to the financial irregularities that took place in Parks and Rec and resulted in some changes to personnel, but also some changes to how we do things. Those irregularities had nothing to do with paying bills online. As a matter of fact, we made sure that the language was specific enough that it would never be that any departments would be paying their own bills and paying their vendors. That takes place centrally through a process that runs through those departments to the city clerk's office, or through those departments and the finance department, and then the city clerk's office. So that has nothing to do with it. And I'll further add that that has more to do with... So that has nothing to do with it, and I'll further add that that has more to do with, well, really wholly to do with cash. And so we are working in the Parks Department to get as close to cashless as possible, and it had to do with establishing fraudulent accounts. That has nothing to do with paying our bills electronically and paying them on time. So I just, I think that it's important that we not confuse those two issues.
So, so if I could, I would just add, number one, I had already said that I do agree it could get a little sticky to put a written policy past that via ordinance, I didn't advocate for that. But you mentioned that this is language from the Arkansas Legislative Audit, I'm not disputing that. But within this language from the Arkansas-
And, and vetted by the Municipal League.
Right. But within this language, it's saying the recommendations are for, I guess whoever the municipality would be, is to establish a comprehensive, for example, comprehensive build your own device policy, and then farther down, it says develop comprehensive written policies. And then also up here in the line one, I wasn't saying that the situation with Parks and Recreation could have been prevented through a policy like this. But when I look at line one and it's saying bring your own device is the use of personal electronic devices to access entity systems, such devices are not limited to smartphones, tablets, laptops, and similar technologies. I just think that if we don't have written guidelines in place in terms of what, which employees are authorized to do what on which devices, I think that that could just open a lot of room to a lot of things that we might not necessarily want to see. So like I said, I'm fully on board with you all making this process more efficient, but I would just be more comfortable if at least the city had a stronger idea of what it's trying to do with this policy, and if it could outline something and just present it to the council just as a supplemental document. Because just the way that is right now, it just seems like we're going to pass this authorizing the city to make electronic payments, possibly via their own personal devices and things like that, and we still don't have a concrete understanding in terms of what that would be. So I'm not trying to obstruct you all doing this, I would just like a little bit more details.
And, and so what I'm wondering is if we could make an amendment to strike that, and I, and just to also give clarity, as we have looked into how other cities operate, obviously some cities are larger, and in some other cities' departments, not limited to finance, they use iPads, you know, to engage different government functions, which, because, I mean, that sounds ridiculous, sometimes that happens. I don't know why, what, what is meant by that. As I mentioned, we lifted a great deal of this language from state audit, and it was vetted by the Municipal League. But if that is a sticking point, I am not averse to us amending this so that that is stricken. And then upon passing it out, the actual language also dictates that the city clerk, the treasurer, and the finance director would work together on establishing those processes. Obviously, we couldn't start until that would be done. And so I think what you're saying is something that is a part of what this purports to do and what, you know, as mayor, I would require before we got started doing anything anyway. So I guess what I'm asking is can we amend the language to address what is clearly a concern among your, the, at least you and Councilmember Lockett, and then move forward to efficiency?
Mayor.
Councilwoman Fraser.
Before we do that, I was just, it's two things. One, I think I understand what you're saying in reference to we're not changing the process, it still has to be whatever the department is going to order, and it goes through their process, it gets to the clerk's office, whether it goes through finance, because we used to go through finance, your office, then it goes to the clerk.
Right.
Once it gets to the clerk, she will send it out electronically. Am I correct? Is that what you're thinking?
No. What I'm saying is I don't know exactly what would be prudent, because, for example, there was something else, and as I mentioned, that I called the auditor's office to see how we could move forward with the reliance technology for making our deposits. It seemed simple to me to just get the machine and start making our deposits electronically. But it wasn't until we talked to the auditor that she said that there were a few things that we needed to check on. I have them written down, and we will check on it. Now, there's no legislation, you know, the, the city attorney's office confirmed that we don't have legislation to do, but that we needed to check with the auditor. The auditor said there are things we need to make sure in place before we start. And that's what I'm saying is there, where that exists here, whatever we need to put in place, which is also identified in the legislation, let's pass it and do that.
Okay, so that's, that's my one, because she usually is the one that cut the checks, so that's why I was saying if she was the one that originally cut the checks that sent out to the vendors, then she, if that's still going to be, if that's still going to be the process, because I do understand we're going through a new system, then she, she or whoever,
then she would talk about the way that she could do that.
Do that electronically.
But there might be something to make sure that oversight is proper in this case, that the treasurer might now do. You know, we know that the treasurer is not necessarily required to look at that or oversee, but the, the ultimate role of the treasurer is for oversight. So maybe the treasurer might say, okay, I'll do this. Maybe there's something that now the director wouldn't have to do for finance or would do in addition. I don't want to be the one to say what we're going to do, because I don't know what has to be done. But clearly, if all we're trying to do is pay electronically, and the payments right now are occurring out of the clerk's office, then it seems to me, just my opinion, that the, the obvious way that we would move toward this is for the electronic payment to be made from that office. I just don't know what else would need to be done. And I don't, if the legislation is saying we need a comprehensive process laid out to consider things that I'm, I'm not thinking about and that don't necessarily need to be outlined in an ordinance, then that's part of what needs to be done. And I don't, and let me say this, because if, I, I know that in, in, last year, before I was sworn in, there was conversation about moving things around. I am not going to do that, I'm not interested in that. Moving the responsibility of who pays what and, and, oh, you see what I'm saying? I'm, I'm not interested in that, that's not what this is. I'm not going to do that. The only way anything like that would change is if our new software system dictated that what was done in an office previously would be done through the, through the electronic process of our new software system. Okay?
And then, and I have one more question before-
Go ahead, and then Councilmember Mays, and then Clerk Roberts.
And I do understand Williams, a councilmember, Fales, I'm sorry, that's my preference, I say the first name, but Fales concerned about the bring your own device, but I think if we just, instead of striking it, we just need to say city devices, because we use city devices. And sometimes when stuff has shut down here, we've had to take laptops home to work on it, city laptops though, not our own laptop, or, or phones or anything, so I don't know.
And maybe that's what it's trying to account for in K, I don't know, but-
Mayor.
Just to-
Councilmember, I mean, City Attorney, Scott.
My understanding, and our finance director is here, but my understanding is the bring your own device has nothing to do with the electronic transfer. It's only, the way it was copied, it just happened to be on that page. It has nothing to do with it. So you're actually only looking at the subsection six, subsection five is not relevant.
So you're saying that section is not relevant to this?
Correct.
Oh, then we shouldn't have had that on here, that just confused us.
Thank you. Thank you. Any further questions? Oh, Councilmember Mays, and then Clerk Roberts.
Yes. We have a lot of people, police and fire out here now, that they're depending on us to make the right decision. This is about your pay.
No, it's not, it's not about your pay. We already do electronic pay. This is about paying vendors and paying our bills. So when we make our payments to Entergy, or when someone completes contract work for the city and they get paid, right now, they have to wait on a, a much lengthier process in paper payments.
Well, what I'm saying-
And this would substitute it with electronic payments, not for pay. Pay is already electronic.
What I'm saying, we need to make the right decision, because you got a stack of checks up there in your office, and they just go on to different people.
There are no stack of checks in my office.
Most of the time, well, in city clerk's office.
She said there are no stack of checks either.
Well, I'm just saying, we need to make the best decision that we can at this time. I'm not going to support this. City Clerk Roberts, if you would, let, let them know about your office, they don't, they don't understand what you do.
Mayor.
Clerk Roberts.
Council and mayor, for the sake of transparency among this body, I would not be opposed to us pulling this legislation, and the three entities, the finance director, along with the city treasurer, and myself as city clerk, come together with some identifiable policies and procedures to move forward that where the full body-
I'm sorry, Clerk Roberts. I, I would be the one to pull it, and I'm not prepared to do that right now.
I, I'm just saying, I would not be opposed.
Well, I mean, you wouldn't need to be opposed, because the voter, the, the council votes, and I just want us to be in order with this.
For, for the sake of transparency, on my behalf as city clerk, I think it would benefit us all as a whole if we could come with some defining policies and procedures that would offer a more structured, sound process for electronic payment. I'm fully, fully in support of moving forward with electronic payments, but however, I want to be transparent to the full body, not only the full body, but to the citizenry as well.
Mayor.
Councilmember Brown.
And I understand where Clerk Roberts is coming from, but in section two, it says the city treasurer, city clerk, and finance director are directed to craft the required policy and procedures for making electronic payments and to ensure that state and local rules regarding record keeping and record retention are kept. So it's already here, but we have to-
It sounds like we're all on the same page, for real.
Yeah, we're, we're all talking about the same thing here, but we need to make, we need to pass this so you all can create the policy. And you can't create the policy until we allow individuals to-
Until you're authorized to create, directed to create the policy.
Till you can, till the council directs, that we can pay it that way. We can't have one before the other, we can't create a policy before we're allowed to make the payments electronically. So I think we're all, we're all there.
Well, with all due respect, I totally agree with you, with there, where there would be no need to have page 20, 21, and 23 attached to it, because when you attach that to a piece of law, that means you're implementing these three, or these three pages of action.
Any further questions?
I think, what, yes, what I do, I have the, the citizens and the city employees and the city in mind, coming from me. Now, say what you want, until we get a better understanding, the Bible says that all you get is, get understanding.
Thank you. Councilmember Holcomb.
So the, the big discussion is the bring your own device.
Which, well, not anymore, because I think council, I mean, City Clerk, City Attorney, Scott clarified that that is not related, it's not relevant to what we're trying to do. It's not-
And also, let me say this, this attachment is from the Arkansas Legislative Audit, and it's basically just giving us a guideline of what should be included in this process, not basically saying this is how we're going to do it, but it's saying that this is how it should be done, or this is, these are some of the policies and procedures should include certain things.
Correct.
In order to be compliant with legislative audit. So it's not telling us exactly how to do it, but it's saying that, hey, these things should be included when you have this policy. So I think if you meet all the requirements from page 20 and 2020, I'm sorry, 20 and 21, 22, they're just saying, hey, you know, if you're going to implement this, then you need to have these things in place.
Mayor Flaherty.
Councilmember Holcomb.
I call for the vote.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance number one. Any further discussion? No further discussion. All those who vote for ordinance number one indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Epstein.
No.
Roll call, Mayor.
Roll call.
Councilmember Mays.
No.
Councilmember Holcomb.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown.
Aye.
Councilmember Lockett.
No.
Councilmember Fraser.
No.
Councilmember Bronson, not present. Councilmember Denton.
Aye.
Councilmember Fales. Councilmember Fales?
Um, no.
So we have a three yays and one, two, three, four, five noes.
Okay. Thank you, councilmembers. So we'll look to address this at the next council meeting. Thank you so much.
Agenda item 1A, an ordinance revising travel policies for city officials, officers, and employees and for related purposes, uh, for the first reason.
Whereas to reduce paperwork and promote simplicity, it is desired to revise the city's regulations regarding expenses incurred by officials, officers, and employees related to approved travel or events. Now therefore, be it ordained by the city council of the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, section one, that the attached four-page city of Pine Bluff employees' travel policy, having been vetted by the council, is hereby approved and adopted. The contents thereof are hereby incorporated herein as if set forth, word for word. This policy supersedes all previously adopted travel policies and applies to all city elected officials, officers, and employees, whether uniformed or non-uniformed. Section two, all ordinances, ordinances are parts of ordinances in conflict herewith are repealed to the extent of the conflict. Section three, the sections, subsections, paragraphs, sentences, phrases, and words of this ordinance are hereby declared to be severable. Should any of the foregoing be found unlawful, the remaining shall continue to be given full force and effect. Section four, this ordinance not being of a general or permanent nature, it need not be published and shall take effect immediately upon passage.
Listen on the calendar. Agenda item number two, a resolution providing for placement of costs of correcting certain nuisance on tax books, add to legal taxes, and collect it as such.
Whereas ACA 1454903 and ordinances 4669 and 4968 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, empower and authorize the city to give the property owners a required notice to-
Move for adoption.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. It's been moved and seconded, the resolution number two be adopted, any discussion?
Yes, Mayor. Move to, uh, pull this, page four, lines 10 through 12 from this resolution, this account has been settled and paid in full.
It's been moved and seconded. It's been moved and seconded to amend to agenda, the item number two as reflected in your packets. Any discussion? No discussion. All those who are for adopting resolution number two indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Agenda item number three, a resolution-
Oh, wait, 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 we have to, oh, yeah. Move to a pass as amended.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt resolution number two as amended. Any discussion? No discussion. All those who are for adopting resolution number two- All those who are for adopting resolution number 2 as amended indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Agenda item number 3, a resolution amending the 2025 municipal budget to close the ARP fund account and transfer its funds to the general fund.
Whereas ordinance number 6849 requires that an adjustment to the municipal budget be memorialized by ordinance or resolution depending upon which form was used to approve the budget. And whereas the 2025 municipal budget was adopted by resolution number 4849. And whereas an adjustment and change to the budget is needed to close the ARP account, fund account, and transfer the funds in the account into the city's general fund. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, Section 1, the adjustments to the 2025 municipal budget as requested and explained in the attached budget adjustments, having been examined, is approved. The particulars thereof as detailed in each attachment are incorporated herein as if fully set forth word for word and number for number. Section 2, the 2025 municipal budget adopted by resolution number 4849 is amended to incorporate the adjustments and changes set out in the attachments. Section 3, the Finance Department will ensure that the budget is implemented as amended.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that resolution number 3 be adopted. Any discussion? No discussion. All those voting for the adoption of resolution number 3 indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Agenda item number 4, a resolution amending the 2025 municipal budget to transfer funds with the Community Development Fund.
Whereas ordinance number 6849 requires that an adjustment to the municipal budget be memorialized by ordinance or resolution depending upon which form was used to approve the budget. And whereas the 2025 municipal budget was adopted by resolution number 4849. And whereas an adjustment to the, and change to the budget is needed to allow the transfer of funds within the Community Development Fund. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, Section 1, that the adjustment to the 2025 municipal budget as requested and explained in the attached budget adjustment having been examined is approved. The particulars thereof as detailed, the, detailed in the attachment are incorporated herein as if fully set forth word for word and number for number. Section 2, that the 2025 municipal budget adopted by resolution number 4849 is amended to incorporate the adjustments and changes set out in the attachment. Section 3, the Finance Department will ensure that the budget is implemented as amended.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that resolution number 4 be adopted. Any discussion?
Yes, yes, sir.
Councilmember Mays.
Explain memorialize. How does that feel in this thing?
Where is it?
Memorialize, I mean, really?
Recorded. Recorded.
I'm just saying, I, they don't know, they don't know what memorialize is up here on this.
It's recorded in our ordinance. So it's memorialized, it's in there until we shift or change it or make amendments to it. It's in our ordinance.
The process of preserving memories, especially the creative memory of people or events, that's what I got.
Yes, that's-
That's a dictionary.
Councilmember is correct, and it's been vetted and approved by our city attorney. So we're going to move on. Any further question? Okay, with no further questions, no further discussion. All those who are voting for the adoption of resolution number 4 indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Agenda item number 5, a resolution amending, amending the 2025 municipal budget to transfer funds within the general fund for the Parks and Recreation Department.
Whereas ordinance number 6849 requires that an adjustment to the municipal budget be memorialized by ordinance or resolution depending upon which form was used to approve the budget. And whereas the 2025 municipal budget was adopted by resolution number 4849. And whereas an adjustment and change to the budget is needed to allow the transfer of funds within the general fund for the Parks and Recreation Department. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, Section 1, the adjustment to the 2025 municipal budget as requested and explained in the attached budget adjustment having been examined is approved. The particulars thereof as detailed in the attachment are incorporated herein as if fully set forth word for word and number for number. Section 2, that the 2025 municipal budget adopted by resolution number 4849 is amended to incorporate the adjustments and changes set out in the attachment. Section 3, the Finance Department will ensure that the budget adjustment is implemented as amended.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that resolution number 5 be adopted. Any discussion? With no discussion. All those voting for the adoption of resolution number 5 indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Agenda item number 6, a resolution amending the 2025 municipal budget to transfer funds within the general fund for the settlement of litigation and to match a grant.
Whereas ordinance number 6849 requires that an adjustment to the municipal budget be memorialized by ordinance or resolution depending upon which form was used to approve the budget. And whereas the 2025 municipal budget was adopted by resolution number 4849. And whereas an adjustment and change to the budget is needed to allow the transfer within the general fund to settle pending litigation and provide the city's match for a grant. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, Section 1, the adjustment to the 2025 municipal budget as requested and explained in the attached budget adjustment having been examined is approved. The particulars thereof as detailed in the attachment are incorporated herein as if fully set forth word for word and number for number. Section 2, that the 2025 municipal budget adopted by resolution number 4849 is amended to incorporate the adjustments and changes set out in the attachments. Section 3, the Finance Department will ensure that the budget is implemented as amended.
Move for adoption. Second.
It's been, it's been moved and seconded that resolution number 6 be adopted. Any discussion?
I just want to, uh-
Councilmember Frazier.
I just want to reiterate again, I just felt like I, I didn't, when we did the special call meeting, I just felt like I didn't have enough information to say yes to this settlement. And so I am, I did request information that I still have yet to get, but that's all I want to state.
Any further questions? Councilmember Mays.
This was moved over here. This is $45,000 on a, on a lawsuit that was, uh, that was voted on by the council. And they slipped it back in on the-
Slipped it by?
I guess, I don't know. I'm voting no on it, so go with it.
Oh, that's fine.
That's, that's fine.
Okay, but nobody slipped anything. We have an open process, and members voted, okay? So we're not going to use that terminology. Any further questions? With no further questions, all those voting for resolution number 6 indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed?
No.
No.
Motion passes.
Agenda item number 7, a resolution waiving competitive bidding and authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with YA 8.
Whereas the City of Pine Bluff desires to provide a program that combines technical skill-building with emotional resilience and civic engagements and blends entrepreneurship, activism, and STEM into powerful, purpose-driven learning experience. And whereas YA 8 Arts and Motion is a youth-centered enrichment initiative designed to promote creativity, wellness, and academic growth through structured programming that blends the arts, mindfulness, STEM, and motion-based activities. And whereas YA 8 has a proven track record of inspiring, empowering, and educating youth in underrepresented communities by creating safe, dynamic environments that nurture the whole child, mind, body, and spirit. And whereas the mayor should be authorized to enter into a memorandum of understanding with YA 8, which would permit it to exclusively utilize portions of the city's Chester Heinz Community Center to implement its program. And whereas the City of Pine Bluff should continue to pay the utilities and provide maintenance to said facility. And whereas, due to the unique attributes of the YA 8 program, engaging in competitive bidding for these services would be impractical. And whereas Arkansas Code Section 1458-303 permits a municipality by resolution to waive competitive bidding when doing so would not be feasible or practical. And whereas, it is in the best interest of the City of Pine Bluff for the mayor to enter into said agreement to permit YA 8 to utilize the Chester Heinz Community Center to facilitate its programming goals not to exceed, and this was a Scrivener's era, 24 months. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, that Section 1, the City Council finds that in light of the foregoing competitive bidding to permit YA 8 to provide youth programming from the Chester Heinz Community Center for the city would be impractical and not feasible. Section 2, YA 8 shall be permitted to use the Chester Heinz to facilitate its youth programming for 24 months. Section 3, the mayor is hereby authorized to execute the attached memorandum of understanding and any other documents necessary to facilitate said agreement.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that resolution number 7 be adopted. Any discussion?
I'd like to add as sponsors.
I have a question. I know that we're giving them the building in the, in the attachment. It also says total cost of projection, $28,75617. And it's a breakdown of all of that. Is that coming, is, are we paying that or is that something that's being in kind or? And if we are paying it, it's not in the legislation so that we can say what account is coming from? And is it coming out now or next year?
My understanding is that would come from Parks and Rec since this building is under Parks and Rec and that's already in their budget.
Okay.
If I'm, unless I'm incorrect, okay, thank you. Any further questions?
Yes, yes, Mayor.
Councilmember Mays.
Laurie, if y'all would, like I said earlier, make it work. Please, just make this work. A lot of people come in and be asking herself from the City Council and you look, something you don't see it. You know? But I know you, you'll make it work. Don't take no for, for answer. Just keep going. Just, please, y'all just keep going, don't stop. You got my support and my vote from up here.
Thank you. Any further question?
And I would like to be added too.
So councilmembers Holcomb, Frazier, Brown, Denton would like to be added as sponsors. With no further discussion, all those who would, who vote, who would like to vote for resolution number 7 indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And congratulations to YA 8 today. And now we will move on to announcements. Number 1, Pine Bluff Police Department presents National Night Out Tuesday, August 5th, that's tomorrow, from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM at the Pine Bluff Convention Center. America's Night Out Against Crime will include hot dogs, hamburgers, popcorn, bingo for adults, games for children, bouncy houses, police K-9, firemen, smokehouse, as well as vehicles and equipment. And fun while enjoying conversations with officers and visiting community awareness booths. There will be something for everyone, children and adults alike. Item number 2, get ready for the second health fair and hygiene product drive for local schools happening on Saturday, August 16th, 2025, hosted by Old St. James Missionary Baptist Church. This event will take place from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. The location is the Old St. James Family Life Center at 4512 South Ohio Street in Pine Bluff, Arkansas. The health fair will include free blood pressure, glucose, cholesterol, and prostate screenings. Experts representing social services and healthcare will be on hand to assist with insurance needs and answer questions. Law enforcement, fire safety, and ambulance demonstrations will be featured on site. Item number 3, celebrate National Root Beer Float Day with a tasty twist. Join us to make classic frothy root beer floats cool, creamy, and also refreshing. Sip, smile, and chill with this sweet treat on Wednesday, August 6th, 2025, from 4:30 to 5:30 PM in the Teaching Kitchen for children ages 5 to 11 at the Main Library located on 600 South Main Street in Pine Bluff, Arkansas, 71601. Item number 4, two more, y'all. Item number 4, second Saturday, August 9th, 2025 is Family Fun Day at 1:00 to 3:00 PM for all ages. It is free and open to the public. The Art Times 3 Campuses' second Saturday Family Fun Day provide, offers monthly hands-on arts and science activities in which visitors create art, complete science projects, or perform dance, music, or theater. Activities complement current art or science exhibitions. Activities are free and led by visiting artists, local art educators, and staff. If you have any questions, contact Shaquila Ramon, Programs Director at 870-536-3375. And finally, save the date, GVI Sneaker Ball, August 15th, 2025, from 5:00 to 8:00 PM, located at 2402 East Harding Avenue. Get ready to lace up your flyest kicks and shine at the Youth GVI Sneaker Ball, hosted by Sixth Division Juvenile Court. For more information, call 870-730-2072. And with that, we will adjourn and commence to the public comments on non-agenda items.
I want to thank Chief Compton too with the Fire Department pinning around our firehouses outside in the city.
Thank you. Okay. And now we will hear from those who signed up to speak on non-agenda items. We already heard from Chief Shirley Warrior where we were introduced to our cadets. Is Crystal Green here? Okay, Ms. Green.
Good evening. My name is Crystal Green. I am with DeWax Deluxe Outdoor Care. We are the contractors for Martha Mitchell Expressway. My reasoning for being here tonight is that we have been receiving our payments extremely late. Three weeks past due for the last two months. I'm just trying to get some clarification on what is the actual process. Once we send the invoice in, it's taken us three weeks to receive our payment. By that time, it's time for us to cut again. We also have not received clarification on if we're going to be doing the flower beds monthly when we cut, or is it going to be every other month? We have not received our signed contracts. We also have not received clarification on the welcome signs when we are supposed to cut those. I have spoken with the directors. I've spoken with Mr. Matthews, Mr. Michael Gilliard. No one is returning my calls. I have no, no account for anything. Even now, we are, this is week three, we have not received our payment for July's cut. And it's time for us to cut for August.
If I could say something really quickly before anyone might have any questions because you did call me on Friday at the end of business. And since then, I did have an answer, didn't have your number, but saw where you were coming today. So that's why I wanted you to go ahead and feel free to share with the council. You did, when you called me, you called me about the check. I didn't know about count, contract signings, copies of contracts. And you mentioned that you were three weeks behind for the last two months. My understanding from when I did inquire on Friday and today is that the-
My understanding from when I did inquire on Friday and today is that the two weeks that we were behind when I spoke with you on Friday was due to, number one, and this is what I found out today. There was, um, and, and balance that needed to be corrected. And because there was a retirement that occurred during this time and that person was on vacation for three weeks, that in order to make that correction, we had to get, well, I won't say we, well, we, the city, had to get a copy of the contract from the clerk's office, which did happen. But then unfortunately, the staff for the finance department was out for the following week. And as you know, if you turn in your invoice this week, you get paid the following week.
Not in all cases, no.
Well, I, I'm not saying in all cases, but as a rule, generally, that's how this goes. And, um, I'm just trying to explain to you what happened in this case.
Okay.
I can't speak to communication, who called whom. When I did follow up and spoke with Mr. Gilliard, he indicated that he did call you back on Friday.
No.
And I'm just.
I understand, but.
So let me explain what I found out. And that there was no answer and he, he talked to me on Friday about it. And when I talked to him today, I knew that you were coming. So I said that we would talk to you when you got here and explain what happened rather than try to explain it over the phone because I know that you were on the list before to talk and I didn't want to discourage you from coming and speaking your piece. So I just wanted to make that public and plain to you and the council. And if any council members have any questions at this juncture. Councilwoman Frazier.
I'm just a little concerned that they allowed you to start work without you actually having a contract.
So the original contract was signed, um, after we signed it, it was supposed to go to the mayor's office for her to sign. But then the contract was supposed to be amended to include the flower beds, uh, sixteen flower beds on Martha Mitchell. We have not signed that contract. We have not gotten it back, no anything, no clarification. For the month of July, we did not, um, cut the flower beds. Mr. Um, Matthews sent me a text message and stated, don't cut the flower beds. He just sent it in a text message. So, but it's supposed to be where we're supposed to do the flower beds when we cut the freeway. Um, I know you can see the difference because they haven't been cutting over a month, so they're overgrown. So I really just need some clarification on if they want us to cut the flower beds monthly, if they want us to do the signs. I mean, I don't know anything.
So the contract is the contract. As it relates to the flower beds, I have signed a change order. So that doesn't, that, you, it's not, it doesn't necessitate that you sign a whole nother con- amended contract. We do the change order. I did sign it for that one time. Now whether or not, um, it would need to be done again, then that would necessitate another change order. So I think that there does need to, um, there might need to be a conversation and it probably needs to happen with Mr. Matthews once he returns.
Okay, so I was informed that Mr. Gilliard is over there now.
He, he, he has been the one in charge, but I think that he would still need to have a conversation because Mr. Matthews has always done this.
Okay.
And I, and, and because the, um, that particular change order is above five thousand dollars and is costly, it's not something that's just done.
Correct.
Okay, and so in terms of you getting paid for the work you've done, that is in process. And what you, you didn't know when you called me on Friday, which I think is our fault, um, is that when you called on Friday, the, or, the invoice in arrears had already been submitted and was in process, which means you would get paid this Friday for that invoice.
Correct, but it's three weeks. It takes three weeks. So just like when y'all were talking about electronic payments, we are a small business as well. It shouldn't take three weeks for us to receive a payment.
I'm in complete agreement. You heard me say that.
Right, it, it shouldn't take that long for us to receive a payment. I mean, we spent thousands of dollars on gasoline, on, you know, paying our employees to cut each month and then for us to have to wait an entire month to receive our money back. I mean, that throws us behind as well. We have to go into our personal accounts to make those payments and I don't feel like we should have to do that. And so my thing is, at this point, do I supposed to start assessing late fees? Because in the contract, you all give us a certain timeframe of when we supposed to have Martha Mitchell cut. So it should be a timeframe on when you all are supposed to pay us as well.
And, and the contract didn't say what the terms were. Usually it'll, well, when I used to be there, I used to see terms like net thirty days, net fifteen days.
No ma'am.
It's nothing in the contract to give a specific timeframe.
No ma'am, even, even in the contract, like it's not in this contract, but we pick up the trash and we don't even charge y'all for that. In the past, in twenty twenty-three, we charged for that, but we didn't even charge for that this year. So it's like, you know, we're trying to assist the city, but we're not getting anything back.
So is Larry back now? I thought he.
Councilmember Mays? We're not going to talk about people's schedules and personnel matters, but did you have a question? Did you have a question about this particular matter?
Well, who been cutting your check at the bottom?
We pick up the check from the clerk's office. So this particular check, I was advised that finance was not in office. That's why it was late. Also for the month of June, they told me that they were out for like a week, so finance had to do something and then that's when we received our payment. That was the check for the nineteen thousand, when they told me that finance was out for a week. And so that's why that check was delayed for three weeks. That's when you and I had the meeting with your chief.
Right, the whole, the finance wasn't out for a week.
Yeah, that's when I was instructed.
I think the director might have been out sick.
Okay.
Okay, and there were other issues with regard to that and I'm, I'm just going to say this because I know you're frustrated. And, um, and I am sorry for that and I'm glad that you were able to come here so that you can know that we know.
Right.
And, um, as far as the mayor's office, I did my due diligence to see, find out what happened. No, 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 and I'm not, I'm not trying, what, what, I'm just, I guess, wanting to make sure is that you know, we hear you.
Right.
And I want to, I want the council to know and really the public watching that the, um, invoices that you called me about on Friday is in process. As to your concern about the lag time and the delay and those issues, um, I agree with you and I'm doing what I can to make sure we address it. We will pick that ordinance back up in the next meeting and where we didn't have enough people, um, because Councilwoman Brunson was out, ma- maybe she will be in agreement and it'll pass. And if not, we'll go back to the drawing board and figure out what we need to do from there. So that is my pledge to you in terms of the efficiency piece and the electronic, um, payment process.
So who do I speak with?
Councilwoman Frazier.
And I just want to say this first to, to be clear. I'm all for electronic payments.
Right.
Second, um, even with your issue, the issue is not really electronic payments. The issue is staff being out and not having cross-training so that when someone is out. The process can still happen. So until we fix that part, I mean, we need to fix that part and we need to have the electronic things. I don't want anybody to leave here thinking that I am against electronic payment. I am not against it. I just said no because I think that it's just still some, we got to work out some stuff.
Well, and just, and just to keep the record straight on even that initial payment that you came for last time, that was not a matter of cross-training. Even though that is an issue and we are working on that too. At the last moment, what happened, um, was there was some delay in even the, uh, the invoice getting to finance. And the proper paperwork was submitted to the clerk's office and then there was a question as to who could pick it up. So.
There's never been a question asked.
No, no, hold on. There was and we talked about it. I'm just saying there was a question.
I understand what you're saying, but I've never had a question on who picks it up. He has a power of attorney.
Well, we don't have, listen, we're not getting into that. I'm making clear that that was a point of contention and question. That's what was brought to me.
Okay.
When I wasn't there and I was at a conference and came back and we talked about it. I'm not taking sides on either way.
Okay.
We, we, we bypassed that. I'm just clarifying that it wasn't a matter of, uh, the staff in the finance department couldn't help you. Those processes did happen even in the absence of the director. Ultimately, what happened was some question as to who could do what. We discussed it. It was resolved. The check was picked up. I'm just clarifying that since it was stated that that particular issue was a matter of cross-training. It was not. Even though that is an issue that we are working to rectify.
Yes, Madam Clerk.
Let me once again assure Ms. Green that once it is any invoice, not only DeWalt invoices, but any vendors' invoices received in the clerk's office by four o'clock P M. on Tuesday, it will be processed, executed, and checked ready on Friday for pickup by one o'clock P M. So anytime you get it in on time and it's in the clerk's office on time, you will get your check.
And that, but that's not even an issue.
No, I just wanted to reassure.
I know, but I don't want anyone to think that that is at issue. So that's not at issue. You get the checks out on time, that's not at issue. You came to express your frustration. Your check is on its way out and you'll, and it'll be available on Friday.
Okay, so who do I speak to though about the flower beds and such? Because we're supposed to start cutting again.
We can't deal with that up here, but I think there will need to be a conversation and we'll make sure that the, um, someone from Economic and Community Development reaches out to you to have that conversation and clarify. So you can get a copy of the change order and be made clear about how to move forward with regard to the flower beds and we thank you. And by the way, Martha Mitchell looks beautiful.
Thank you.
Okay.
Questions for me?
Um, and now.
Speaker, Bernard Bivens.
Oh. I'm so sorry. Bernard Bivens.
Brainard.
Brainard Bivens. Is here to speak about curbside recycling. Good night is more like it. Good evening.
Arkansas Community Organization and we've, uh, we drafted a petition, I'd like to read right now, to the city of Pine Bluff. We, the nonprofit organization of Arkansas Community Organizations, are advocating for a more sustainable curbside recycling program in Pine Bluff. High Springs, Fort Smith, and Fayetteville are cities in the state of Arkansas with sustainable recycling programs, just to name a few. Just in August of twenty twenty-two, Boston, Massachusetts, set up a curbside food waste recollection program. That's period. That's another example. In the process of the renewal of the Waste Management Contract, we just encourage the city to include a sustainable curbside recycling program. And the members of this organization would like to participate in this manner. Thank you.
Council, Councilmember Mays?
That's a good thing. Uh, we need that. Other cities have the recycling and they're doing well. I think we have enough people here. Some people, you have some, a groups that would like to get involved in that. And we need to put our, you know, share in there and, and build recycling in, in Pine Bluff, curbside. I agree.
Thank you.
Um, I just would like to, um, assure you that that actually is something that we're looking at. And I'm not sure if you have seen that we're in the process of, um, an R F P, uh, for our sanitation contract. And one of the elements that didn't, that doesn't exist obviously, but one of the elements that we are including in the R F P to price out, so that when we get that book, um, or that response to the R F P from those interested vendors, we will be able to see if that's something that, um, is prudent and that is affordable for, um, residential and commercial, uh, customers. And so I would ask that you show up to our September second meeting. September first is Monday, but, um, that's a holiday. So we will, uh, conduct our, um, first week, uh, council meeting in September on Tuesday, September second. And, um, you will be able to hear the process and the finalists for the council to make a decision and on, uh, what, um, contract that we select, which may or may not include recycling. Hopefully it does.
Well, I, I don't see why it shouldn't, but it's a.
It'll be a matter of cost.
Positive impact on the environment.
Because we're, we're getting it. It'll be a matter of cost only.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And with that, I, uh, will entertain a motion to adjourn. I didn't get it. I didn't do the adjournment. Did I? Okay, it's really time for me to go home. Thank you all so much.
Testy, thank our police department again. Thank you all for what you do. Chief, thank you too. Fire Department, thank you all too.
Oh, we're going to take pictures. Yes.